All right, Mr. Mayor, it's 1:00 and you can start the meeting when you're ready.
All right, thank you, Isaiah. It is Thursday, July 15th at 1:00. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Isaiah, would you please lead us in the flags?
Sure, I'm going to ask Ryan Stindell, our Public Works Director, to lead us today.
Please join me in honoring our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation.
Thank you. Kristi, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Kite?
Present.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Wile?
Here. All right, we now will have the non-agenda public comments, an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda, for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Isaiah, would you take care of that for us, please?
Sure, if you'd like to make a non-agenda public comment, now's the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom. If you're on your telephone, you would hit star nine to make a non-agenda public comment now. We will go ahead and start with our pre-filled out speaker cards. Barbara Gibson? Yeah, please come up to the podium, state your name and city of residence.
My name is Barbara Gibson, and I am here to ask the City Council to please reevaluate its short-term housing policies. I have operated a short-term rental for about six years through Airbnb, and all those years Airbnb has sent my room taxes directly to the city. And so at the end of May, I was very surprised to find out that I was violating a code and that I would have to pay $1,000 fine if I didn't clear things up immediately. So I tried to clear things up immediately. I contacted your office, and Mr. Nicholas Gitron asked me for an earnings report, which I sent him. The earnings at that time was $270 with $330 to the city. He said, "Thank you for providing the documentation. We will be reviewing and provide you with an update this coming week." I didn't hear a thing. I had, I told him that I had delisted my short-term rental because I couldn't afford the $1,700 fee for a permit. I make $1,000 a year doing this, and I sent you all a letter before I came here today. So at the end of, I didn't hear anything, so I figured it was closed. I wasn't going to do Airbnb. That was it. I can't afford the fee. So then in June 30th, I get an official notice of delinquent administrative citation for $7,000. You didn't pay your fine, so now you owe us $7,000. So I thought, what is going on here? I have run this for six years. Nobody is hurt. Nobody is bothered. We don't have parties. I'm present at the home, and why is this happening to people like me who don't violate the intent of these short-term rentals? So number one, I would like the City Council to dismiss this ridiculous fine for an income of $270. Number two, I would really like the city to find a way for us to afford the special permit so we can continue to operate. This is something that I've done as a retiree. It's something that I'm good at. People enjoy it. Nobody is hurt. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker is Jim Elliott.
Good afternoon, Jim Elliott. I live on 72447 Magnesia Falls. It's nice to be here unmasked, so appreciate that. I want to weigh in on the changing of the meeting time to 5:00 or some other time than 1:00. I was silent last time I was here, and I wish I'd spoken up. I was on a City Council in Texas about nine years ago. We met at 5:00, and it's not necessarily apples to apples, I understand, but three of the five council members, of which I was, were fully employed. I was fully employed at the time. So one of the things that came up for me is that, you know, people that may want to run, a good viable candidate that might want to run for City Council, if that person was fully employed, would make it difficult for that person to do so. So I think that's, that's an issue. The second thing is I'm not clear on whether the Council continues to want to use Zoom so people can participate remotely. If that goes away, then people are, those people who use Zoom that can take a break during the day if they're working, they become spectators because the only recourse they have is to watch the videotape a day or two later. I think that's a mistake. I don't know what your intentions are. It's not clear to me. Maybe you can clarify that for us today. And then the last thing I'd like to say is it's, I appreciate that the Council stood in there over the pandemic. I think things are easing now. I think I would, I would welcome to have you back in person. I think the public would like that, too. I know it's a personal choice, but I see everyone masks off and it looks like there's plenty of room for you, so I would welcome you back in a heartbeat. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else here in person that did not fill out a speaker card that would like to make a non-agenda public comment? All right, seeing no one else here in person, let's go to our remote audience. Kate Spates?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Kate Spates, proud Rancho Mirage resident for over six years. I want to read the email that I sent you last week. What will it take you to thoughtfully consider changing the City Council meeting time from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.? How many signatures? How many public speakers? Will it take a ballot measure? Please review your council meeting attendance numbers, both in-person and virtual, and consider this request. Simply watching the playback of the meeting on YouTube is not the same as participating in a meeting. Observing a meeting after it's over isn't exactly democracy at work. Over the past year, the meeting videos have an average of 113 views. The petition folks, the folks from Rancho Mirage Forward created is not mean-spirited or in any way critical of how the City Council handles city business. It's merely a request to push back the start of the meeting time by a few hours to allow more residents the ability to participate in our local government and increase awareness about the issues and opportunities in our great city. A meeting in the middle of a weekday precludes many from attending, which is not equitable. I'm glad to hear that you will continue with Zoom attendance for the public when you resume in-person meetings in September, but I ask this legitimate question. What will it take for the Rancho Mirage City Council to change the meeting time to 5:00 p.m.? I look forward to your response. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no other speakers, Mr. Mayor, we'll close our non-agenda public comment period, and I will return this to you for council comments.
Thank you, Isaiah. We now have council comments. Richard, would you like to start, please?
Yes, Ted, I would. Thank you very much. The sixth annual Taste of Summer Rancho Mirage starts today. It is really important that we support our businesses and our nonprofit organizations with a Taste of Summer Rancho Mirage. Residents and visitors get to enjoy delicious food, special treats, and a great deal of other focused items for over 20 participating Rancho Mirage residents. The program begins today, July 15th, and runs through August 15th. Here's how it works. You purchase your $10 wristband online at rancho mirage chamber.org or in-person at 71905 Highway 111, Suite H, or in-person at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory located at 71100 Highway 111, or in-person at the, any of the 20 participating charities. Visit tastesommerrancho mirage.com to see the list of participating restaurants and charities. A big thank you to our sponsor, SoCal Gas, and KESQ News Channel 3. Get your wristband today and enjoy having a beautiful dinner in Rancho Mirage. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Richard. It is a great program, great benefit to our restaurants and all of the participants. Charlie, do you have any comments today?
No, Mr. Mayor, not at this time.
All right. Dana, any comments?
No comments.
All right, Iris?
Yes, I actually do have two comments, one of which was from the last meeting, which I was unable to make, so I will make it now. And I'm delighted to announce that we in Rancho Mirage have a new birth center. And Marty Masiallo, the president and chief executive officer for Eisenhower Health, stated that, and Jason, are you able to put up the slides? Great, thank you. Marty stated that envision a future where Eisenhower's relentless pursuit of excellence elevates us to the highest levels, claiming our position among the top-rated and most revered hospitals in the country. Eisenhower has been known as a medical center for older patients, but with the establishment of the Graduate Medical Education Program, known as GME, they laid the groundwork for needing to become a full-service hospital. Since Eisenhower Health is seeing a change in the patient population they serve, they looked at what those patient needs were and realized that a demand for quality maternity care was one of those needs. Eisenhower Health has done its research and has identified what is important to women when a woman is expecting the focus is on her baby and ensuring access to exceptional facilities with the latest state-of-the-art technologies staffed by caring and experienced professionals. As the population of the Coachella Valley grows and more families settle here, the need was apparent, the need for a birthing center at Eisenhower Health. The new birth center is committed to top-quality care for which Eisenhower is renowned, providing advanced individualized services and exceptional patient care. The location of the birth center on the medical center campus is in the Walter and Leonor Annenberg Pavilion. The new 50,000-square-foot unit will be everything paid, paid parents to be and babies would dream of. There will be an eight-bed neonatal intensive care unit, known as the NICU. There will also be a 14-bed labor, delivery, recovery, and postpartum unit, known as the LDRP, and there will be two C-section suites with four antiparum and a seven postpartum bed unit. It is all situated right above the intensive care unit and adjacent to the emergency department, which are two units that will work extremely close with the birth center. The emergency department is where expectant mothers sometimes arrive when they are in labor. And on rare occasions, when mothers need a higher level of care, the ICU unit is quickly accessed. The birth center will offer state-of-the-art technology, expert labor and delivery teams, and a commitment to making every birth a very special delivery. The birth of a baby is a wonderful, yet very complex process, and newborns must make many physical adjustments to life outside the mother's body. Leaving the womb means a baby can no longer depend on the mother for important physiologic functions. Newborns who need intensive medical attention are often admitted into a special area called the neadonatal intensive care unit, and most babies admitted to the NICU are premature, have low birth weight, or have a medical condition that requires special care. The NICU combines advanced technology and trained professionals to provide care for the tiniest patients. The birth center NICU will have the capacity to care for babies born at 32 weeks or later with a birth weight of three pounds, three ounces or above. Not all hospitals have a NICU, and a great benefit of the NICU is the special team that takes care of the mother and the baby. There is even a camera at the mother's bedside, so parents can watch their baby remotely, which helps keep family members connected, which is even more relevant in this current climate in which we find ourselves with COVID. And Eisenhower is the only NICU in the area that offers private rooms. And there will be eight infant care rooms in Eisenhower's NICU where staff can stabilize and treat babies. No two pregnancies or births are the same. The most common major surgery performed in the U.S. isn't to remove an appendix or replace a knee, it's to deliver babies by cesarean section or C-section. A C-section is an operation to deliver a baby through an incision made in the abdomen and womb. It is a major operation that carries a number of risks, so it is usually only done if it's the safest option for the mother and baby. There will be two C-section surgical suites located within the birth center. The private suites will be equipped for labor, delivery, recovery, and postpartum, which allows new mothers to begin, complete, and recover from childbirth while remaining in the comfort of the same room. Giving birth is a personal and unique experience for every woman, and Eisenhower wants to make her labor and delivery the best it can be. And in honor of the former Monsignor Howard Lincoln, the longtime chaplain and community leader, the inside of the birth has been named the Monsignor Howard Lincoln Family Birth Center. So we congratulate the Eisenhower Birth Center. We congratulate the entire Eisenhower organization, and we especially congratulate the former Monsignor Howard Lincoln. Okay, thank you. That's the end of that.
Mr. Mayor, how does this, are you done? Iris?
Actually, I have one more announcement, but if you wish to say something, Dana, please go ahead.
Okay, you were mentioning Monsignor Lincoln. I would like to offer on behalf of the city and all of us, congratulations to retired priest Howard Lincoln, who is now leading the priesthood to marry a woman with whom he has fallen in love. Some chastise him for his departure from a clergy, or for loving a woman, or for getting married. After his many years of public service, there are no criticisms that carry any weight. He has earned the right to do with the balance of his life at which he wishes, including falling in love. His service through Protestants, Catholics, and the nonreligious alike must be admired by the entire desert community, which to some large extent, his presence has benefited regardless of philosophical or religious belief. Congratulations to the Monsignor, and we wish you a wonderful life as, I guess, as a civilian.
Thank you, Dana. Iris, you said you have some more comments you want to make?
Yes, I have one more comment because Richard and I attended by Zoom the League of Cities Conference on Monday, where there was a strong plea for blood donations. So I mention this because the most people are unaware that there is a severe blood shortage, and if you are able and you can become an ambassador for life, it is a great honor. There is a desperate need for all types of blood, but especially AB-positive. Fortunately, patients are now having the surgeries they postponed during the height of COVID, but unfortunately, the blood donor base has diminished greatly due to businesses and schools not fully open or people working remotely. Something else most people don't realize is that one donation of blood can save up to three lives. It only takes about one hour, and you can fill out the information form prior to your arrival. So if you are able to donate blood and give the precious gift of life, please contact the LifeStream Blood Bank. Their telephone number is listed above, but I will mention it. You can call 1-800-TRY-GIVING or 1-800-879-4484, or you can call the LifeStream Blood Bank directly at 760-797-4484. They are located in Rancho Mirage in the Las Palmas Shopping Center at Bob Hope and Highway 111. Also located in that shopping center is the CVS Pharmacy and the Wells Fargo Bank. Thank you, Jason. So as just a final note, as we all know, every drop of blood is precious, and having an adequate supply is certainly critical. We also know that not everyone is able to give blood, but if you know of people who would want to give, please pass this information on to them. But you must know and appreciate the fact that you may be saving someone's life, and we are all grateful for that honor. Thank you so much, Ted. That's the end of my comments.
Mayor, may I comment?
Yes, go ahead, Dana.
When I was talking about the services that Howard Lincoln, Monsignor, performed, I said, referenced Protestants, Catholics, who did not mention Jewish friends and people that he's helped, that he's helped you, whether you've been an atheist, regardless of your religion, he's just been one of those great people that we will meet in our lives, and doesn't matter what your religion is. Thank you, Ron.
And, you know, if I could just tag on to Dana's comments, because Father Lincoln appeared every year at the Holocaust remembrance observing, and it was at the Palm Desert Park. He always brought a group of his students so they would fully understand just what the Holocaust was about. He taught them what the Holocaust was about, and he always tried to bring people into the community with his love and his care. So he, he cared for everyone, regardless, as you say, Dana, of their religious beliefs or of them not having a religious belief. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comment of any kind? I will mention this ever so briefly. At the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy this week, we approved a study of $125,000 to expand the hiking trails throughout the valley. We, we get inquiries all the time about hiking, particularly during the pandemic because it's obviously outside and healthy. And one of the trails commences at the top of the hill north of the city hall. And those monies are going to be for a study. We do put out maps as far as the trails are concerned, and we hope that this becomes a reality and this trail will be expanded because it will take traffic off of Frank Sinatra if it, if it comes to fruition. I think that's all the comments that I have. At this point, I will ask the city manager if he has any comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a brief moment and thank city staff for the work and effort that they put in during this last year. As most city halls around the valley are just starting to open back up. We've been open for over a year, and staff stepped up in a big way to keep the services to the public going, and I just wanted to acknowledge their work and thank them for their dedication to the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I think we were one of the few cities that stayed open virtually the entire time. So just wonderful job, great, great effort on everyone's behalf. I will ask now for any comments, changes regarding the minutes of June 17th.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes from June 17th.
Ecton. All right, there's a motion in a second. Kristi, if you would, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We now will have the consent calendar. Isaiah, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have six items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt ordinance number 1186, second reading, adopting the First Amendment to Development Agreement, DA 190002, pursuant to case number DA 21-0003 and Chapter 17.56 of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code. Item number three is to approve the final parcel map, number 38003, Indigo Auto Group, Rancho Mirage Auto Plaza. Item number four is the final acceptance of improvements for track map, number 36698 Bravo. Item number five are contracts, and item number six are demands. And before we go to the council, if any member of the public would like to speak on any of these items, now's the time to do so. If you are participating remotely and would like to speak on one of these items, you would press the raise hand button on Zoom. If you're on your telephone, you would hit star nine. Kristi, do we have any speaker cards for the consent calendar?
No, we do not.
Anyone here in person that did not fill out a card that would like to speak to one of these items? Okay, seeing no one here in person, we will go to our remote audience, and Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon. My name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Rancho Mirage, and I would like to speak on item number three of the consent counter, and I want to thank the council for the prior comments and reports. It helps to illustrate the loyalties of our city council. So anyway, I'm opposed to the final acceptance of the, not improvements, but of the map for the new auto retailer shop, which is going to be located across from the library on Highway 111. And the reasons were stated earlier in my comments, but I, it's, it's going to impact that whole area and probably possibly impact the, the Big Horn sheep and, and wildlife that establishes itself in that area. And I know you had an environment or a report done, but I know the city plans changed and you had, I think, a hotel and other small boutique hotel, I believe, that was going to go in there, and other items. So it's a radical change from what it was going to be, and, and as everybody knows, any mountain, anything about it against a mountain, the noise echoes through there, so it's gonna, it's gonna impede our area. So anyway, I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no other speakers, we'll close the public comment period, and I'll return this to the council.
Thank you, Isaiah. Thank you, Isaiah.
I asked Isaiah a question about this.
Certainly, go ahead, Dana.
Isaiah, one of the things that had concerned me in not supporting the auto dealer area was my concern that the lighting would be impacted and that the city, all the money that we put into the observatory could be at some risk. I've reviewed the details of this and I've discussed the matter with our city attorney. And I'm satisfied with the major. And the only thing I would add to it is that if somebody connected with the library, for example, made the comment or made the observation that light was interfering with an observatory show of some sort, what kind of muscle do we have to change that situation quickly so that the observatory show would not be impacted negatively? Steve Q, our city attorney, then gave me all of the various references. And I've come away with the conclusion that if there was such a situation, that it would be dealt with, you know, quickly, forthwith, not simply sold from person A to person B, person C, and then repaired or fixed. And I wanted to ask you if you, Isaiah, feel that it would be remedied so that whatever show that was going on in the observatory would not be negatively impacted beyond just a few moments or a few minutes?
Yeah, you definitely bring up a great point. And the observatory was definitely an item for that whole area. When it was built, we worked with Dan McKenna to develop light standards for that whole area that every project must follow up with. And then also this project was specifically conditioned due to its location with additional requirements and abilities from the city to adjust lighting if it ever interfered with the observatory. So it was definitely something that we well covered within the project.
And you're satisfied with it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I have no further comment on that.
And it was explored in quite detail at the planning commission as well, Dana. Any other comments? Does anyone on the council desire to have any item pulled? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second. Kristy, if you would, please.
Councilmember Hobart.
Yes.
Councilmember Kite.
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Wile.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The next item will be a report and an informational item regarding the Great Plates Delivered Program and a recap by Gabe Cottin, our marketing director. Gabe, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. We're delighted here to do a recap of the Great Plates Program that ran through July 9th. We have a lot of our restaurants here in attendance that were participating in that program. But rather than me stealing the limelight, most of it belongs to Jessica Pulliam, who really put this program together in record timing. And so she's going to walk you through some of the steps that that took, recap the program. And then we've invited Katie Stice in some of our restaurants to be able to speak. So at this moment, I'm going to turn it over to Jessica Pulliam.
Thank you, Gabe. Good afternoon, mayor and members of city council. Today I'll be presenting a recap of the vital city program Great Plates Delivered. This program just concluded on July 9th and was in operation for over one year during the COVID-19 pandemic. The state of California announced the launch of the Great Plates Delivered Program on April 24th of 2020 and sought local involvement soon thereafter. While many cities opted to default to their county or to go without a program, Rancho Mirage's city council moved forward and approved to become the local administrator of the Great Plates Program on May 7th of 2020, and the very first set of meals were delivered to the inneed residents the very next day. Within the first couple of weeks, over 200 participants had signed up. And by the end of the program, over 560 at-risk senior residents of Rancho Mirage had been provided meals. This program provided Rancho Mirage residents who were over 65 years of age or older or 60 to 64 and considered at-risk for COVID-19. And that met other state-set eligibility requirements, including being unable to obtain or prepare meals to be provided three nutritious meals for each day. This allowed those in need to stay home and to stay safe. Collectively, 21 Rancho Mirage restaurants served over 385,700 meals to those in need. Oftentimes, the owners of the restaurants themselves were seen delivering meals directly to our residents, taking the time to say hello and to make individuals feel a little less lonely. On multiple occasions, I received reports of our restaurants and their staff making return trips to provide toiletries, milk, crossword puzzles, and other comforting items out of the kindness of their hearts. It was truly touching, and without them, this program would not have been a success. All Rancho Mirage-based restaurants that could meet nutritional standards were encouraged to participate. Rancho Mirage's program was set apart due to its unique rotating restaurant teams. Our participants were provided two days of meals on Mondays and Wednesdays and three days of meals on Fridays and were rotated to a different restaurant group each Friday. This unique rotation provided participants with diversity in meals. And the grouping of restaurants into teams allowed smaller restaurants who only had the capacity to provide a meal period or two to still be able to participate in the program. Restaurant groups were assigned meal periods and provided a list of dietary restrictions every week. They were required to submit proposed menus on a weekly basis to the city for approval and quality control measures were strictly adhered to. This included the submittal of photos of all meals for review. Rancho Mirage was one of the 41 local governments within the entire state of California that opted to run the program directly. The state of California has over 500 local governments to include cities and counties. Within Riverside County, there are 28 cities, and Rancho Mirage was one of only three cities that chose not to default to Riverside County's version of the Great Plates Delivered Program. The city of Rancho Mirage did not outsource any portion of the program's administration. A hotline was staffed seven days a week by city staff, and the services provided included enrollment, stop service requests, redelivery attempts, as well as a place for our participants to call to compliment the restaurants and/or complain. If the city of Rancho Mirage had opted to have the county run the program on our behalf, our residents would have been served all meal periods by one restaurant for the course of the entire program. The program would have lasted only eight months instead of 15. Enrollment would have been closed within the first few weeks rather than remaining open the entire time to meet the residents' needs. And many of our restaurants would have been unable to participate due to the inability to provide all meal periods or from lacking the capacity and infrastructure to deliver door-to-door. The resulting impact to the local economy and demands for jobs within Rancho Mirage would have been significantly reduced. Meal costs were limited to $66 per day for each participant with $16 allocated for breakfast, 17 for lunch, 28 for dinner, and five for delivery. The initial cost share for the program was 75% to be paid by FEMA, 18.75% by the state of California, and 6.25% by the city of Rancho Mirage. Based on this initial cost-sharing percentages, the city would have been required to contribute $530,000 towards this program, the state 1.6 million, and FEMA 6.3 million. However, approximately halfway through the program, FEMA announced the program would be 100% reimbursed by FEMA. Over $8.48 million was directly expended into the local economy due to this program, providing many jobs that would have likely otherwise been lost. The city has paid restaurants on a weekly basis and anticipates to receive 100% reimbursement from FEMA soon. The city has made a significant impact in reducing the spread by providing needed meals to residents during these unprecedented times. On the last day of the program, the city partnered with locally-owned Brandini Toffee to deliver a final treat as a way of saying thank you to participants for doing their part to keep Rancho Mirage strong and keeping themselves and others safe. I'd like to share a few participant statements. The first, and this is a direct quote, "I just want to thank you for providing this program. When I say that it has been a lifesaver for me and my senior friends, that is not an exaggeration. You truly might have saved our lives from COVID-19." Another direct quote from a different participant. "As a recipient of the Great Plates Program for approximately six months, I want to say thank you for a service well rendered and appreciated. It was a relief to not have to mingle in crowded supermarkets during the pandemic, and the meals were so tasty and easy to serve. The program also introduced me to several restaurants of which I was not previously aware. I will make it a point to visit those restaurants now. Again, thanks." At this time, I'd like to invite Katie Stice of the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce to share comments on behalf of the restaurant and business community.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wile, councilmembers, city staff, guests here today and virtually. My name is Katie Stice, CEO of the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the entire business community, we thank you for your assistance, support, financial aid programs, accessibility, and steadfast partnership. For the food access program at the very start of the pandemic and shutdown to the small business grant program, the COVID hotline opened seven days a week to the Great Plates Program, which we're celebrating today. I can remember at the start of the pandemic, working with the city on the food access program, helping restaurants stay open and making sure the residents had safe access to meals. You were understanding and nimble. Restaurants received their funds in under a week. It was rent paid and means to keep employees in many instances. It kept businesses alive, much like the small business grant program. And collectively, we found new ways to do business and pivot, as we have all said and done far too many times over this past 17 months. Restaurants became corner markets, learned to adapt to to-go only as they struggled to make payroll and rent. The Great Plates Program that the city chose to administer is rare. How rare? 41 cities out of 481 in the state of California participated in this way, and just three cities in the county of Riverside elected to offer and administer the Great Plates Program. It was an incredible accomplishment, organizing thousands of meals, working out logistics on a new program, all during a pandemic. Learning how to make it work, fronting millions of dollars, which in turn saved our most vulnerable from being in harm's way, allowing them to be safely in their homes with hot and delicious meals on the way, saved our cherished restaurants and businesses through a time when many would have had no option but to close their doors for good. We thank you for being the only certainty during the most of uncertain times. In addition, residents and businesses here in Rancho Mirage are now better prepared for an emergency with the experience and knowledge gained. You chose to do the hard work and figure it all out for the sake of your community. The city of Rancho Mirage was and still is here for us all, and we cannot thank you enough for making it happen. We have all leaned into each other to get through this with our city at the helm. It's been nothing less than remarkable. At this time, I'd like to welcome some of the participating restaurants to introduce themselves and say a few words. Please join me.
Good afternoon. I'm Jack Srebnik. I own, I'm partners in The Slice and Maracas. And I'm here in total gratitude to everyone in this room on the screen because we have been at our location for over 12 years. And if it wasn't for the city council backing the city manager and getting into these programs, we would not be here. And you know, a lot of people cry fire and they think you're exaggerating. Well, the CRA, California Restaurant Association, has determined over 30% of the restaurants in California will not be here now that were here a year ago. It started out with a grant that kept us open. We had to stay open to May 31st. That's how, it was so great, we got this money. And it said, you must stay open to May 31st because we thought it'd be over by June 1st. And it wasn't. And then we had to go from inside to outside. Again, we had to think outside the box. When I went to the city and said, we want to put up a tent outside the restaurant so we can outdoor eating, the permit process was eliminated. They said, do what you have to do, get the permission from the landlord, and we did it. I will tell you this, I am involved in restaurants in two other cities in this valley. And there hasn't been one city that's come this close to what you have done to save my fraternity, my restaurant fraternity that's here to speak. And from the bottom of our heart, I can't thank you enough. I and my partners made deliveries by ourselves, went to the houses by ourselves. We made anywhere between 40 and 60 deliveries each time. And the residents in all of Rancho Mirage are so thankful to, they tell us, bye, thank you so much, you saved our lives. And all we said is, no, the city's there. All we do is make food. The city gave us the avenue to get the food out to these people. We did have some people that it was a little too spicy or a little this. But that's restaurant business, and we learned to go with that. I just want to do one other big shout out to Jessica because she did an unbelievable job. Because as a restaurateur, we have to work with the customers, which is hard enough. She had to work with the customers and the restaurants, which is ridiculous. And in a minute, she made things work. There are additional people signed up in a week, other people passed on, sorry to say. But she was out there. And I will tell you, Jessica, I will never want to do your job. And thank you so much for doing it. Thank you, everybody.
Good afternoon. Charlene from Norma's Italian Kitchen. I will reiterate, Jacks, it's not dramatic to say you saved our restaurant at all. I had bought the restaurant with my partners about six months before this all happened for my parents. Taken out loans, we were like on fire with what are we going to do now? The program saved us. The program saved us. It saved our employees. We kept all of our employees and had to hire more people because we were so busy. Thank you, thank you for the grants. We have a beautiful overhang now, Ted, I don't know if you've seen it yet, that we used with the grant money so that we can seat more people outside and keep them cooler. We can go on and on and on. So thank you.
Hi, my name's Jerry Keller, founder of Aqua California Bistro. I'm happy to say we're open again for weekend brunch and dinners. So with the help of the city and Rancho Mirage City Chamber of Commerce, we're moving ahead really nicely. This program was an amazing, targeted, wonderful program to get people good food and give our restaurant community a way of continuing to be in business for the year. So it was a great program. I want to thank everybody involved. Flanking me are two slightly younger folks who were deeply involved in making it happen. And from what I've heard, the residents and the folks who were delivering the food were so involved with each other and enjoyed each other's company. It was another benefit of this wonderful program. So I'll step back and have Chris say a word.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. City Rancho Mirage, thank you.
City of Rancho Mirage, thank you so much. We're deeply grateful for the program that allowed us to keep quite a bit of our staff members busy during the pandemic, kitchen, and our kitchen staff. We had a great time delivering food and seeing the happy smiles and faces on those that were being able to deliver. What do we do? Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and to hear the great positive feedback. Sometimes just those little small things that help bring joy to someone and for them to thank you and to say, "We truly appreciate it." And, you know, our kitchen and culinary worked around the clock to make it happen. And definitely, definitely grateful and appreciate everything. Thank you.
And this young lady did all the cooking herself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Victoria, and I want to, I want to thank you guys because I was going through a really hard time during the pandemic. And when they called me to do it, I was like more than happy to do it. It was a pleasure to serve our family, our community, and thank you, guys.
Hi. I'm Andy Delgado from Las Casolas, Nuevo Vez, and very much want to say thank you to everyone involved at the city for, for doing this program, especially Jessica. That was a lot of work that you've done, and thank you for being there. This was a really show of support from, from the city to the restaurant community. This was the most uncertain time, and we've been open for forty-eight years. It was, it was very uncertain. And this program, once we got on, was a stability for us. It was, it was something we could count on because when we reopened, it was, we had no idea what to expect. And then when we had the second closure, we were able to keep people employed and be able to pay some bills. So it was, we couldn't have done it without the city. I know that my cousin in Palm Springs, the original application was denied, you know, and, and, you know, created much more stress on to her and the other restaurants, our other sister restaurants. So can't thank you enough also, not just from the restaurant community, from the calls, the thank you cards from the residents as well. It meant a lot to them as well, as much to us. And so it's a, just thank you very much for the support. It's, it's, you know, sometimes it just feels special these days because, like I said, not a lot of the cities joined in, and the support was very important to us. So thank you very much.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Jeff McIntosh. I'm one of the owners of Bernie's in Rancho Mirage. This is our general manager, Peter Van Winkle. I can't adequately express to you how much we appreciate everything that you've done for us. This has been an unbelievable journey. I heard the term pivot used earlier today. We've pivoted so many times, it seems like a dance step. But we've made it. We've made it to the other side. We're looking forward to reopening in October. Jessica, you've been absolutely incredible to work with. I have to thank Gabe Coddin. Gabe is the one that initially enticed us into participating in this program. And many, many thanks. It made an incredible difference for us, for the residents that we serve who left thank you notes on our door, voicemail, email, and even in the regular U.S. Post of, Post Office mail. But, and, and deep gratitude from our staff that was able to continue working during a very uncertain time. Peter?
And exactly what Jeff said. Thank you so much to everybody to have this program in place and not only the city of Rancho Mirage, but also to work with all those great restaurants. Also, I'd like to thank the chamber for all the support. And we was able to pay, keep on payroll only two people from the thirty-five people. But everybody was so forward, looked so forward that we can open in October again. And we can almost hire eighty percent, ninety percent from our staff back when we open in October. Thank you so much for this program.
My name is Miho Sumadi. I'm the owner and chef and actually the serving and dishwashing and doing everything like the shohai otani of angels, of shabu-shabu's and sakebar. And thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to give our highest, highest appreciation to all of you who made this program happen and made, that could be the worst year, the two thousand, twenty-twenty, but made a lot of great memories for us. I received the invitation at the very beginning, but I was very timid and I couldn't accept it. But the all staff of you are very patient and asked us again on July. And we said yes because it was very, very hard time for us. And as, so we decided to make the bento box. That's a Japanese typical meal box. And as I started making Japanese-style bento, I tried to remember what my mom made for me for three years on my high school days. My mom was an amazing chef, amazing cook, amazing person, taught me everything about cooking and my everything. She passed away at the end of March last year, the very early stage of lockdown. But I found as I tried to make, create the menu, she was right side of me and gave me the many suggestions, "How's this? How's that? I feel like that." So that was the great journey with my mom. I started to write the small notes onto our menu about Japanese culture, the heart, my mom's recipe, and many seasonalities. And that was the fun part and great memory as well. I, we deeply appreciate this program. Not only it supported our business to survive and kept our employees, but also given an opportunity to serve our community, do the right things, and give some delightful moments to someone who lives in Rancho Mirage, I hope. And I tell you, the biggest reason I am here today is I really wanted to see Jessica in person. The, it must be the very complicated, very stressful, the hard work. But she always, always encouraged us and helped us. So you are just absolutely amazing. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Hi. I'm Tom Schmidt from Shame on Moon Restaurant. First of all, I'd like to thank the council members, the staff. And like everyone says, Jessica, she is superb. She answered all the questions. And we've been with the program since October of 2020, so quite a long time. And she has been just a joy to work with. The program really helped us out a lot, just like everybody else. Payroll, keeping the chefs and cooks, everybody working every day, prepping meals because we were doing breakfast, lunch, and dinner on some of the days and lunches and dinners on other days. So it really was a lifesaver. You guys have done a great job. I'm so proud to be part of Rancho Mirage. And once again, she deserves so much. Jessica's done a great job. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jocelyn with I Pastries, right across the street. How I found out about you folks was I gave a phone call to Gabe, who answered me. I had a rumor that my area was going to be demolished due to the casino coming. And he told me that, "No, I'm helping the Ritz Carlton, you know, start the marketing plans to reopen the end of July." So I think Gabe told Jessica about me. The next day, I received a phone call from Jessica asking me to do the Great Plates Program. And I had some questions because I'm a bakery. Sure, I'm a chef too. I know how to cook and everything, but I wasn't sure exactly what to do. And she pointed me through the right steps of doing everything. I started off with twenty. Then later on, I said, "You know what? This is really helping me. Otherwise, I had nothing going out. I had only two customers that were still ordering for me. I'm a wholesale business shop, so it's hard to get any business. I tried Facebook, Instagram, and everything. Some of my chefs says, 'I've never seen you post so much in your life.' I said, 'Yes, I'm learning, and I'm trying to do whatever I can.'" So thank goodness for the Great Plates Program. That really saved my business and my staff from not getting any income coming in. And I usually have three of us going out delivering. We love doing that. First, I was a little skeptical. I'm like, "I might be a little bit afraid of them because of the COVID." But guess what? They're more afraid of me than them. And eventually, they see us all the time, and we became very good friends with some of these seniors that we delivered to. So it's very touching, you know? It's nice to see them, and they're so happy to see us. And they really, really appreciate everything that you do for them and all the meals that they do receive. So bottom of my heart, thank you very much for everything. You saved my business. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yang Vu. I'm an owner of Hibachi Steakhouse, Chef, Diswas, everything. And I do appreciate everything the city have done for us and everyone involved. And I don't know what to say, but we do appreciate very much. Thank you.
My name's John Cucho. I represent Country Club Cafe. I can't add anything else that Katie already said earlier, so not to double everything. And I work with other restaurants in other areas in this council and the city. I mean, I can't applaud you more for wanting to help. Others were hiding in their basement and turning off their telephones, but the city, the staff, and Jessica, you know, you all stepped forward and want to make sure that businesses stay in your community. And so I just want to thank you guys for being proactive and, and working and trying to work with businesses. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Marty Webster. I'm the owner of Aspen Mills Bakery. What a blessing the city of Rancho Mirage has been to, to Aspen Mills. You know, we have different locations throughout the valley. And the city of Rancho Mirage has done far more than any other city for small businesses and even beyond, beyond the Great Plates Program. And Jessica, finally get to meet you and see you, but thank you so much for all that you've done. We appreciate you. We have over thirty employees throughout the valley, and it's, it's helped all of us. It's helped the employees to keep them, keep them employed, give them more hours. It's helped us. It's been also kind of nice getting to know the other restaurants, to getting, building relationships with other restaurants. It's been fun. We thank you so much. Such a great blessing. And thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi. My name is Deborah. I'm with Pastry Swan Bakery and Meatless Marketplace, and I just like everybody else. I'm glad to actually get to see Jessica and some of the other faces. And we cannot express as well as all of our employees how thankful we were to have been actually saved. We know that we would not be in business if it wasn't us being in Rancho Mirage. So that was number one. Also, I think about for the year, the people that we've got to know, the calls that we would get, looking at as a year of, of them getting breakfast, lunch, and dinner, how healthy they are compared to a year ago. I mean, just seeing some of them in the beginning and seeing them at the end. The, the spirits were definitely thankful. So from the Pastry Swan Bakery and the Meatless Marketplace, which we were the vegan side of that, we all say thank you so much.
Some of the other folks weren't able to make it today, but definitely send their thanks and appreciation to all of you and to our council for making this happen. And there are a lot of folks that are still here. If we like to do a picture with our celebrity, Jess.
Of course. So while you're assembling for the photo, city manager, city council, Jessica managed all of the logistics for this. So this included hundreds of texts. If you can imagine, eight to ten thousand meals per week that needed to be strategized between twenty restaurants. And, and it was her idea to set up the, the variety, to set up the rotation. So that was all her process that she built. She went above and beyond. And, and that's why in 2020, we named her our employee of the year for her efforts from that, so.
All right, mayor. Obviously, this was one of those programs that had just a ton of impact on the community. And I know it's been said a lot, but Jessica's just one fine example of our city employees. And one of the great things about this program is it protected our at-risk seniors. It brought together our restaurants, and they really banded together to help each other through this very difficult period. And I just wanted to thank the council for their support, the staff, and their support of this program. And it just was one of those special things that I think we'll all remember during a very difficult period. So at that point, that ends our presentation, and I'd be happy to turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Isaiah. Obviously, it was very inspiring and so satisfying for all of us. We congratulate all of you, you included. Without the support of staff, it doesn't work. And I can tell you this. I even was contacted by the mayor of one of our adjacent cities to thank me for being a city that inspired them to get into the Great Plates Program. They saw what we were doing, and they said, "We want to do the same thing." So it was your hard work that did it. And again, we can't thank all of you enough.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, if I may say a word or two?
Absolutely.
You know, in all the years I've been involved with the city of Rancho Mirage, and even before on the council, being with the chamber, I have never seen such an outward of love and people who came out during a busy day from their work to come and show the support for this staff and for Jessica and everybody that helped with this program together. I think there was, this was a one-of-a-kind situation, and it really moved me. We're so grateful. I am that the city of Rancho Mirage has such wonderful, wonderful businesses and restaurateurs in our city.
Well said, Charlie. I think we all feel the same way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Richard.
Just one comment. Do not forget that today begins the Taste of Summer Rancho Mirage, and you're going to find a lot of the same restaurant owners and servers in this event. It's a great way to support our local businesses and nonprofit organizations. So start today. Go out and get your wristband, ten dollars, and make this another great Rancho Mirage program.
Thank you, Richard.
If I can say a word also?
Certainly, go ahead.
Because this has been such an incredible presentation we've seen before us. I don't think any of us ever expected something like that. But it just shows that between our city manager, Isaiah Hagerman, and our staff, and especially someone like Jessica. You know, Rancho Mirage has never missed an opportunity to provide for as many of our residents and our businesses as possible. And these are the things that we try to do, and these are the things that people are thankful for. And these are some of the reasons why people move to Rancho Mirage, both for their homes and for their businesses. So thank you again. Thank you, Isaiah. Thank you, Gabe. You all made it happen, and we couldn't be more proud. You all made it happen and we couldn't be more proud.
All right, well, thank you. I think we all have shared our accolades and justifiably so. Moving along, the next item is going to be addressed by Kofi Antamam, our Director of Administrative Services. And it has to do with the annexation of number 183 to Community Facilities District Number One. Kofi, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. This item is to hold a public hearing on annexation 183 into CFD Number One. This is the second and final step in the city's standard annexation process into CFD Number One. The first step was considered and approved at the June 3, 2021 council meeting through the adoption of Resolution Number 2021-27. The territory proposed for annexation is located on the northeast corner of Bob Hope Drive and Ginger Rogers Road and comprises of parcels totaling approximately 4.49 acres. This project proposes three office buildings combining for a total of 35,501 square feet. At the conclusion of today's public hearing, provided written protests have not been filed and in the absence of a majority protest, the council may consider adoption of the attached resolution, calling an election, declaring the results of a special election, determining validity of prior proceedings, approving the annexation of the territory and directing the recording of an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kofi. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. If any member of the public would like to participate in the public hearing, now's the time to do so. If you are participating on Zoom, you would hit the raise hand button. If you're on your telephone, you would hit star nine. Christie, do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
Okay, is there anyone here in person that did not fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing no one here in person, let's go to our remote audience. All right, not seeing anyone on the remote audience either. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn this over to you and the council. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Isaiah. I'll ask the city clerk if she would give us the results of the election, please.
Certainly. The ballot for the five eligible votes was received on July 15, 2021 and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Thank you. Does any council member have any comments about this particular item? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the annexation.
Well, I will make a motion then that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2021, next in order, calling an election unleaving a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District One, Annexation Number 183, declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory and directing the re-coordinating of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien.
Second the motion. All right, there's a motion and a second. Christie, please, roll call.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile? Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five.
Yes. Thank you. The.
You only get one vote there, Mayor.
I was ready, waiting and able. The next item is the consideration of environmental assessment case number EA 20-0006, presented by Pilar Lopez, our Assistant Planner. Pilar, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And good afternoon, city council members. I have for your consideration, environmental assessment case number EA 20-0006, preliminary development plan case number PDP 20-0005 and sign program case number SIPR 21-0001. A request from ICAP Development to develop a commercial building to be occupied by Lazy Boy Home Furnishings on Highway 111. The subject site is located on a vacant 2.32 acre parcel along Highway 111, bordered in the west by Rio del Sol Road. The property is bordered by the Morin Stanley Furniture Stores to the south and a vacant commercial building to the north. The site is located within the Highway 111 East Pacific Plan District 11, the Magnesia Falls mixed use. District 11 is situated at the southernmost end of the Highway 111 corridor. District 11 is composed of 10.5 gross acres that are designed for community retail and professional office use with the underlying zoning of general commercial, the CG zoning district. Existing businesses within the district include professional offices and design furniture-based businesses such as Stanley Furniture and Ethan Allen. A home furnishing store is a permitted use within District 11. The proposed project is located on a 2.32 acre irregular trapezoid lot with Highway 111 as the eastern border and Rio del Sol Road as the western border. The proposed development will consist of a 17,462 square foot building amounting to 17.3% lot coverage. Setbacks for the proposed building are 90 feet in the front, the Highway 111 side, 108 feet in the rear, the Rio del Sol side, 10 feet on the north side and 77 feet on the south. Primary access to the subject site will be provided via new driveway off of Highway 111 and a secondary access point will be located on Rio del Sol Road. In addition to these two access points, a vehicle cross-access point with the neighboring property, Stanley Furniture, to the south will be established connecting the various furniture stores. A loading dock is proposed on the side of the building. Truck deliveries will enter the site via the Highway 111 entrance and exit via the Rio del Sol Road entrance. A truck path is shown on the site plan to illustrate how delivery vehicles will be able to safely maneuver in and out of the site. A potential expansion of the project may be proposed at a later date. This expansion would be limited to an increase of approximately 10,720 square feet. The potential expansion would require additional parking spaces and would need to go through the appropriate entitlement process. Potential parking spaces are included as a reference. Parking on-site has been determined by one stall per 500 gross square feet as a requirement for a furniture store. This results in a requirement of 35 parking spaces. The applicant proposes four ADA parking spaces and 31 parking spaces for a total of 35 spaces. Generally, new developments along Highway 111 require the construction of architecturally compatible carports. The applicant is proposing three sales shade structures. The sales shade structures will be a tan color and the maximum height will be 14 feet. The shade structure along Highway 111 will cover two ADA spaces and the two structures in the rear will cover a combined 16 spaces. The proposed building will have a sales floor area of 14,993 square feet with 2,194 square feet dedicated to office stock area. The sales floor area will consist of a rotating showroom. Pony walls and other movable room dividers will create the proposed showroom. The architecture of the project is contemporary in design and incorporates high-quality materials. The applicant proposes a modern and welcoming project that exhibits desert-appropriate architecture throughout the site. A flat roof combined with soft brown and gray tones fit the natural environment surrounding the site. The Lazy Boy building will have a maximum height of 25 feet. The Highway 111 East Pacific Plan allows commercial buildings to have a maximum height of 25 feet with an approved development plan. The proposed project thus complies. The building will feature stone accents and idenized aluminum as well as varying facades that add further interest. The entry facade would be a sand pebble fine texture finish in light cream. The majority of the exterior will be painted in medium cream in the same stucco finish. An accent parapet will be painted dark brown. The east elevation will feature a wall sign and is the main entrance parallel to Highway 111. The south elevation will also feature a second identifying wall sign with show windows. This elevation is visible from Highway 111 and follows the same design as the main entrance, the east elevation. The west elevation matches the other three elevations with a muted approach, although all architectural accents are still visible from Rio del Sol Road. This slide shows a material board. The proposed landscape plan includes a rich mix of desert-appropriate plants. The applicant proposes 331 shrubs. The shrubs proposed include black Dahlia, Thompson coyote brush, Texas ranger and red bird of paradise. A total of 41 trees are proposed, which include heritage live oak, drake elm and Afghan pine. The trees will provide 27% total shade on-site. Mexican fan palms border Highway 111 per the Highway 111 East Pacific Plan's landscape guidelines. Approximately 59,874 square feet are proposed to be landscaped, which amounts to 59% of the total lot area. A sign program is being processed concurrently with PDP 20-0005. Wall signage is proposed on the building's east and south elevations, which front Highway 111. The two wall signs are proposed to identify the building from a Highway 111 perspective and are architectural as well as identifying features in these elevations. The two wall signs will be internally lit. Each sign is proposed at 39.76 square feet. The proposed signage complies with the municipal code. No monument signs are proposed at this time. These two renderings show the proposed project in relation to the surrounding properties. This rendering shows the site from a Highway 111 viewpoint. The project was first presented to the Architectural Review Board, ARB, on April 26, 2021. Board members brought up various questions related primarily to the project's landscaping. The applicant worked with staff to address these comments and presented a revision to the ARB on May 10. After a review, the ARB approved the project to go before the planning commission. The project was presented to the planning commission on their regularly scheduled meeting on June 10, 2021. The applicant answered questions related to the operation of the business and expressed their excitement for the project. No other members of the project, no other members of the public spoke for or against this project. The planning commission recommended approval to the city council and the motion was carried 4-0. This final rendering shows a bird's eye view of the proposed development. Staff has not received any public comments for the project. The planning commission recommended that the city council approve, one, the filing of a categorical exemption of environmental impact pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15332, and EA 20-0006, and two, approval of preliminary development plan case number PDP 20-0005, subject to the content findings and conditions in the staff report, and three, approval of signed program case number SIPR 21-0001, subject to the content findings and conditions in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation and staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Pilar. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time. You would hit the raise hand button on Zoom. If you're on your telephone, you would hit star nine. Christie, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Is there anyone here in person that did not fill out a speaker card that would like to speak on this item? Okay. Go to our remote audience. Seeing no one in the remote audience, I will turn this back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Isaiah. Is there anybody on the council that would like to make a comment regarding this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would, if I may. Let me just say that this is a very deja vu moment for me because when I was at the LA Times many years back, I had the privilege of having to call Aunt Lazy Boy that was in Rancho Mirage at that time. And to seeing them come whole circle back home with this outstanding, beautiful building and now what is becoming our furniture row in Rancho Mirage. I am deeply excited and it touches my heart that they have chosen Rancho Mirage and welcome back home. Thank you.
If it excites your heart, Charlie, it excites my heart too.
I'm slurring as well.
Exactly, Richard, did you want to say something?
Yes, I would. Can you go back one slide from where we are right now showing the video from outside?
Was it this, this rendering?
The last rendering that we showed.
I have this one and then our last slide, this one?
You're going to have to share your screen.
Oh, is it not? Sorry for that, give me one second. This rendering?
Yes. When I was at the planning commission meeting previously, I noticed that looking at this particular layout, it looks like there are a number of trees, fairly sizable trees, that are located on the 111 route here, the east facing side. Are we concerned at all with all these heavy tall trees blocking the easy building?
Most of these trees will not grow higher than the building itself. It looks a bit clustered here, but they are required to provide a certain amount of trees that provide shade. And for this project in particular, the only location where that was a viable area was the frontage.
And council member Kai, this is Jeremy. I just, I just wanted to state the fact that the quantity of trees out there, there are requirements in the city's municipal code that they plant a minimum amount of trees. So they have met that requirement with this plan.
So we're not going to block out the visual part of the building?
No, this, this is consistent with other developments along Highway 111.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Richard, this did come up at the planning commission, which I attended also. And it's, it's a good point that you asked the question. And that was a concern, that they answered it with the greatest exception that it will not block the visibility of the store.
Any other comments?
I would just like to make one comment, one quick comment, that I think it's just a beautiful building. I think it's going to be an excellent addition. And I want to thank Charlie personally for his expertise and his historical remembrance of all the things that happened because he's been here so long and he remembers all this good stuff. So thank you, Charlie. You're our resident historian.
You're welcome. And it's nice to know that I know so much in one way, in another way, it's very scary.
Scary for all of us. Thank you.
If there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Well, I will make a motion, if I may, seeing that I'm so glib on this subject.
No question about that.
I'm hogging it here, but I promise this will be my last one. I will make a motion that the city council adopt, the commission recommends that the city council adopt, A, approving the filing of a categorical exemption of environmental impact pursuant to CEQA, Section 15332, in field development projects, and environmental assessment case number EA 20-006, B, approve preliminary development plan case number PDP 20-005, subject to the content findings and conditions in the staffing court, and finally, C, approve sign program case number SIPR 21-001, subject to the content findings and conditions in the staffing.
All right, I'll second that. All right, I'll second that. Kristi, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Absolutely.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item will be handled by Gabe Cottin, our Director of Marketing, and it's a presentation regarding the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership Request for Funding. And I think we have a guest here, and Gabe, if you'll handle that.
Sure will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel again. We are here, so back on June 3, the CEVAP, Coachella Valley Economics Partnership CEO Joe Wallace sent a, sent the letter, which is in your agenda packet, for a request for funding from Rancho Mirage. Also included in your packet is, shows the letter and then also shows the funding of what the other cities that are currently contributing to CEVAP and what amounts they're contributing as well. And so the request that being considered today is that the city council review after Joe Wallace's presentation, the request for $10,000 for fiscal year '21-'22. And at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Joe Wallace with CEVAP to come up to the podium.
Good afternoon, and I appreciate the city council and staff for offering me the opportunity to come here today and talk about what it is that we do and how we benefit not only the whole valley, but the city of Rancho Mirage. So I spent an hour and a half this morning on a Zoom with Gabe, and we were discussing how we could use our GIS. It's our analytical capacity to work together and do some of the solutions with data to help the entire valley. And what a lot of you don't know is that Livestream hired us to use our GIS capacity several years ago, and our capacity chose that location that's here in Rancho Mirage. So that's the kind of analytical capability that we have, and that put a business right here, a life-saving business that has. We do have one company that the owners do live in Mission Hills, so they're Rancho Mirage residents, and we mentor them as needed and we provide them with a, I'll say, a cost-mitigating opportunity to take advantage of the CEVAP facility. So they're month-to-month, rather than having to sign a five-year lease, and hopefully they will, at some point, graduate and move into the city of Rancho Mirage and expand that business. You know, some other things that we've taken on this year is we formed a separate 501(c)(4). As a c3, we cannot lobby. One of the things that CEVAP identified as a big need in the, in the Coachella Valley is for a university. Priority one, Coachella Valley, was formed by CEVAP, the CVB, and the city of Palm Desert. And we are lobbying actively through that nonprofit to get a $101.5 million stipend from the state of California to expand that campus. And expanding a university campus is probably the most important thing that ever has and ever will happen in the Coachella Valley. We are the only place in the United States with nearly 500,000 people in the population that doesn't have a four-year comprehensive state university with STEM degrees. So that, that's why I have been placed in, in that position to try and solve the big things. It's a perfect storm. COVID came along. There's a recall election on September 14, and on September 10, a state budget needs to be signed. So we are making a great big final push. They have asked us to stop faxing them because they have to reload their machine all the time. So we are wearing them out to get a expansion of our university. It's something that should have been done many, many years ago, and we, we're taking that one on. We've also taken on the bandwidth challenge. I'm on the SCAG Committee for lighting up all of Southern California. I'm working with SEVAG in one of their programs. It's going to have digging to put in conduit. They've already agreed to put in conduit in most of the major places in the, in the valley next year. After conduit comes fiber. We're working with people to try and get fiber in that. So it's dig once, and this will solve the bandwidth problem in most of the Coachella Valley. And it's something we've had a problem with all along. Those of you who've tried to watch Netflix and you see that little thing that goes around and around the middle, that white dot, that's an indicator of bad bandwidth. And if you can't watch a movie, you surely can't send medical images from that beautiful Eisenhower Center to doctors on the East Coast that may be needed to, to make a judgment on what could be done for a person's care. So we're working on the big pieces that are needed to be done, but the big pieces are the things that lead to little things like a blood center. We're opportunistic. Our opportunistic nature last December led us to be one of only three agencies in the entire state of California to request and be granted $3 million worth of PPE. Roughly $57,000 of it was handed directly to Katie because this is where your city manager said he would like it to go so Katie can get it to the businesses. But we also did that. And, and as CEO, I even went around to the businesses. My territory was that corner up there where Stabone and Albertson's and some of those are. And I was going over in my own car and keeping these places in face mask and in, in hand sanitizer. So that's, that's, it takes an entrepreneur to do that, and that's why only three places in the state did it. So I'm here today to ask you to come back in. We've enjoyed having Councilman Kite and Mayor Wile. As board members in the past, they've provided valuable input to CEVAP. And you know, it was a bad year. I completely understood that you wanted to be conservative with your cash and take care of your restaurants last year, and I even thank you for what you did to them. And that was a hard act to follow. But thank you. Please consider voting yes on this and join the only regional development for economics in this valley. Thank you very much. Any questions? I'll give it a try.
Well, thank you very much, Joe. Actually, I have attended, as you know, a number of the meetings. I was unaware, for whatever reason, that Livestream emanated through your entity. I think that's great, and it's nice to know that. Obviously, it's particularly poignant at this time. Do any of my colleagues want to make any comments?
Matt, I just have a brief question, and it's really good to see you here today. I know while I was on the board, the financial condition was kind of up and down over a period of years. How does CEVAP financially today?
We are better than CEVAP has been since 1994, when it was founded. I'm putting together the CEO report for the end of the fiscal year. We have about five months' worth of cash in the bank. When I was put in charge six and a half years ago, we didn't have five weeks' worth of cash in the bank. We didn't even have one payroll. So we have lived, not only opportunistically, but we've lived lean. And that leanness has put us in a position to, to have time to breathe. You know, I don't have to start calling people on Thursday for Friday's payroll anymore. And I, I hope I never have to, but you know what? I've, I've got it, got it in me to do so if it comes through. But we've had a great board, we've had great financial committees, and for the first time in my 10 years in the valley, CEVAP is on pretty good support with finances.
And Joe, you brought up broadband. It was several years ago, you wrote a Valley Voice on the importance of broadband, and that prompted a meeting that we had here at City Hall with the Subcommittee. And we were looking forward to our signal synchronization project, and based on that conversation, we made some adjustments, and we put in fiber lines and conduit throughout that whole project. And we developed a dig once policy. And all of our projects now are conditioned to put in the conduit and the fiber lines. And, you know, it stemmed from that Valley Voice that you did, so.
Great. Thank you. It's great news.
Joe, we really appreciate you being here today.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Joe, I'm looking at the presentation on page 10-1, and at the bottom, it says, "For additional content, the following six desert cities currently support at the following levels." And it says Palm Desert and goes through down to Desert Hot Spring. Are those current numbers that they are going to apply this year to your organization? In other words, i.e. Palm Desert, 305,000, and then in parentheses, 175, and then you don't have Rancho Mirage listed? Is, what is here, and if I add Rancho Mirage, is this the entire content of the funds that you receive from the nine cities?
Yes, it is. And if, if you were reading the paper last week, you'll notice that Palm Springs has cut back their general support by $50,000. But there's a chance to reconsider that. So they won't be 325, they'll be 275, but everything else has been approved.
Very good. There were harsher numbers that they were looking at, at that time, reading that article. So I'm glad to see that they have reconsidered. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Dana? Did you want to say something?
I can't say I want to say something. I feel obligated to say something. I don't know, 15 years ago was somewhere around there was the first time I attended meetings having to do with CEVAP getting money. And every year since seems like is, nothing has changed, nothing has been, nothing of importance has occurred. My guess, Indian Wells gave $10,000 just to say we participated, but not seriously because seriously, nothing much has come out of CEVAP for over a decade. And I have so many times said, this is the last time I'm going to give them, vote to give them some modest amount. It's almost always been 10,000. You got a little more of the share, and that's good. The fact that they've taken on the school as an object of where they're going to put their time and presumably some money, the junior college, that seems convenient. Everybody supports schools. So they're now talking about schools. I don't, I won't say they didn't, weren't talking schools 15 years ago. Same school was here then, but I certainly don't have a recollection of it. I mean, I would, I would support doing what Indian Wells did, just in the hopes that something of substance comes out of this organization. But I wouldn't give more than that. And I'm sorry, Joe, to be negative, but you can see it from a perspective of somebody looking from the outside, you would recognize that little has been accomplished over all these years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other comments?
Yes, Ted, I have a comment.
Okay.
Actually, I have a question because there's a vast amount of information on the CEVAP website, and it covers a lot of career pathway programs and currently facilitates three councils, one of which is healthcare, number two is advanced technology, number three is media and entertainment. And I know a lot of the focus is to have students go to colleges and universities and find free federal funding. But not every student wants to or can go to a college or to a university. And not every student or person wants to study philosophy or calculus or statistics. And we still need carpenters and electricians and plumbers. There are a lot of trade schools out there, and I have always supported trade schools for those who, who don't want to or cannot afford or don't have the desire to go to college or a four-year university and want to be in the workforce or need to be in the workforce right after high school. Does CEVAP give any support or encourage students to attend trade schools? Or are you just focusing on the colleges and universities and feel that perhaps, you know, students that want to pursue these other professions like carpentry and electrician work or plumbing, just get a job with a company and learn, have on-the-job training? You know, how is your focus on trade schools? And do you think about supporting them or, or encouraging students to attend trade schools?
Yes, and about four years ago at our summit, I brought in a gentleman by the name of Ankur Gopal, who, he was my first in the entrepreneurship center I had in Indiana. And he now has a 300-person company, and what they're doing is they're doing retraining to make people who used to mine coal write code. And it's working very well in Kentucky. We've been trying to get the county involved out here. We've made his services available. He's been out here and made two or three presentations. And a coding academy for somebody who, whether they're a college graduate or not, is a way to help people into a better career that pays more whenever the robots start taking over because the low-end jobs are going to get automated. We are supportive of the academy that's going to be put in Cathedral City to teach auto repair, to implement, to diagnose what's wrong with, and to know how to take care of it. But yes, many of the problems that we have right now in our supply chains are because we don't have enough of people that are in this middle ground where they have, they need a skill higher than manual labor, but lower than a nuclear engineer. So yes, we're trying to push as probably as impactful to this valley in the next 10 years as automation comes in, as some of the other high-end work that we're trying to get done.
Thank you. That kind of answers it because I, I did have concerns about the people who, who fall through the cracks, who are not going to go into technology or entertainment or healthcare. There's a, as you say, there's a vast world out there, you know, where we need to be able to pick up a phone and call a plumber or an electrician and, and have those people have access and support and possibly some federal funding for those trade schools.
Yes, I, I agree with you. And they're all going to get very wealthy in the next two years because all of our house prices are going up, which liberates money for remodeling. And that's the kind of skill it takes to do that work.
So how, how do you focus, or what exactly do you do that relates to a trade school or, or encouraging students to go pursue something other than the three items or the four items? You now mentioned auto repair. And are there, are there facilities that you are working with, schools that you're working with that are trade schools? And do you get funding for students to attend those trade schools?
We do not get funding, we don't get funding for that. We are working with, I'm, I'm on the Architectural Board and the Bandwidth Board for the College of the Desert. So whenever these trade schools happen, and the College of the Desert is the one here that does things like that. They have programs to where you can get a certification to be a heating, ventilation, and air-conditioning person. They have construction trades at the College of the Desert already. They have for a long time.
Okay, so everything would be through the college, and it wouldn't be where students have to have all the other preliminary classes in order to pursue a, a career like auto mechanics?
Yes, they, they do what's called a certification program. And it might be eight weeks, it might be 16 weeks, but you don't have this vast amount of. it might be sixteen weeks, but you don't have this vast amount of general studies requirements that you usually have to, to, to get a bachelor's degree in anything.
Okay, and is that something that, uh, you can help with funding, federal funding to achieve?
Well, we don't have any federal funding for that. If some becomes available, we can be a conduit through which we help people access it, very much like the PPP loans this year. C V I P was very active in helping businesses secure PPP loans, uh, and which are now forgivable, but it wasn't our money, it was our talent that helped small businesses that are scared out of their mind when they look at federal forms, and, and we walked them right through it. I mean, we, we helped probably fifty, sixty million dollars come into this valley, but not with our money, with our actions.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you for that, uh, information, and, uh, I wish you all the very best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, you know, one of the things that, uh, you know, one of your noble causes in pursuing this four-year university is the idea of when somebody graduates from C O D, they can immediately move on to a college right here in the valley and hopefully, uh, pursue a profession that keeps them here in the valley. And I think that's one of the major benefits that you're, um, you know, that, that you've undertaken. I'd like to, uh, I'd like to make, uh, a motion that the city of Ranch Mirage reinstate their ten thousand dollar funding support for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two.
Second the motion.
Christie, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, before we, uh, move on to the vote, um, we need to open up the public comment period on this item. So if any, any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom. If you're on your telephone, you would hit star nine. Christie, do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
Uh, anyone else here in person that would like to speak on this item? Let's go to our remote audience. Okay, Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Ranch Mirage. Uh, thank you, that was a very interesting debate, or not debate, but, uh, information or, uh, uh, combat that the city council had with the spokesperson. I'm at a disadvantage because I did not have access to the, uh, first staff report this week and, uh, but, uh, I do have a little insight on the other cities and this program. And, um, uh, my red flags were when, uh, uh, Skag was mentioned and, uh, and, uh, C V I P. Uh, but anyway, uh, I, I, I more or less have a question, but, uh, my understanding is maybe the ten thousand dollars is not a donation, but a membership fee? And if that's true, uh, if you could clarify that, uh, but if that's not, uh, that's okay too, because I know other cities give more or greater amounts, I guess. Uh, but, uh, I guess, uh, I guess my main concern is, uh, uh, what the city benefits or how the city benefits. And I know it's kind of a blanket statement, uh, it benefits in certain ways. Uh, it's kind of like the Great Place. I mean, everybody pays for it, but very few benefit from it. And, uh, and I know the, uh, connection between U C R and the C O D and some of the council members, and I'm sure this is all related to that, and I'm sure this will pass today. Uh, but, uh, that's, uh, I guess that's my main concern is just how, how it benefits the city and, and, uh, how your program, or your programs, I guess, would benefit the, the residents of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else that wishes to speak on this item, we will close the public comment period. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, you have a motion and a second, so if you're ready for the vote, Christie's ready to do that now.
Yes, if you would, Christie, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay. The, uh, the next item is also being handled by Kofi Annabom, our Director of Administrative Services, uh, regarding consideration of resolution of intention to annex territory comprising twenty-five point fifty-four acres. If you would, Kofi.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is the first, um, step in the city standard process for annexation into C F D number one. The final step in this process will be considered at the September second, twenty-twenty-one council meeting. Jason, if you can pull that aerial for me? So as projected on the screen, the territory proposed for annexation is located on the southwest corner of Highway one eleven and Mirage Road, and it comprises of one parcel totaling approximately twenty-five point five-four acres. The project proposes two auto dealerships and a service building combining for a total of thirty thousand four hundred and fifty-two square feet. The project was approved by the city council on May thirteen, twenty-twenty-one and has a condition of approval to annex into C F D number one. So in accordance with the conditions of approval, the owner of the annexed territory submitted a petition for annexation, requesting that the city council initiate the annexation proceedings into the, um, territory and provide for expedited approval for the annexation and levy of a special tax. Approval of the resolution will allow the city to, one, accept the petition submitted by the owner for annexation, consent to the levy upon the annexed territory, allow for a shortening of the, um, time for special election, accept and preliminarily approve the annexation map and direct the city clerk to record the map and establish the date and time for a public hearing on the annexation and the levy. Staff recommends approval of this item, and that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kofi. If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time. Uh, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone to make a public comment. Christie, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Anyone here in person that didn't fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, we will go to our remote audience, and Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, hi again, Brad Anderson, City of Ranch Mirage. I guess I, I have concerns because this is, it seems like, uh, this is a very fast process that, uh, this development is going through or getting approved at, and, uh, the reasons I have, uh, questions is my understanding at the last meeting was that the, uh, the property was not, uh, purchased or, or, or bought yet or obtained, uh, for the purpose of an auto dealership. And, and also how the properties were going to be divided if, if, if that organization failed and the city had to, uh, recoup its losses. Uh, and so I would imagine it would be three or four different, uh, A P R numbers or A M P numbers or whatever they call those, uh, but, uh, that's really, I'm getting lost in details, but, uh, my issues is, you said owner, so i- if there is just one owner, does he retain all these properties or is it, uh, is that going to just be, um, extended to the September meeting and hopefully everything will be concluded at that time? And, uh, I guess, uh, and that's, uh, that's it. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, seeing no one else that would like to speak on this item, I'll close the public comment period, and I'll turn this back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Isaiah. Is there anybody on the council that would like to make a comment regarding this item? Uh, seeing none, I'll call for a motion, please.
I will make the motion that the city council adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one. Next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to community facility district number one and to levy a special tax varying for additional police and fire services, preliminarily approving a map of the same area proposed to be annexed and scheduled a public hearing to consider the annexation of the levy of the special tax for annexation number one eight five.
All right, I'll second that. Uh, Christie, uh, if you'll roll call, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, sorry for the interruption. For item number twelve, uh, staff would like to request a motion from the council to table this item, and we'll bring it back in September.
I'm moved.
Second. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
The next item will be the closure of the Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory for flooring replacement. Aaron Espinoza, our library and observatory director, if you would, please.
Uh, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and city staff. Uh, today's staff is requesting permission to close Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory for three weeks, starting in September, to complete our flooring replacement project that was approved in item number five of this agenda. Due to the comprehensive scope of the project, closing will allow us, our contractors, to complete their projects in a timely manner with few interruptions in the safety of our staff and patrons. Closing in September, which is traditionally our slowest month, will help mitigate the interruption to our patrons as well as our programming. The summer reading club will have just completed, and we will not have yet started our in-person programming. Although we would be closed to the general public as a physical building, our e-services as well as our in, or our phone access services to our reference librarians would still be accessible from, uh, from nine A M. to five P M. Uh, we have been in active communication with our neighboring libraries in Palm Desert, Cathedral City, and Palm Springs, uh, who are eager to help assist our patrons, uh, should those, uh, our patrons need, uh, their facilities, uh, just as we help, uh, their residents on a daily basis. Uh, once the contract is executed and the flooring materials have been secured, the formal timeline of this project will, for the closure, will be set. Staff will ensure the public is made aware of the closure with proper signage, e-blasts, social media postings, and other marketing materials. This concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period on this item. If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. Uh, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Christie, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Is there any member of the public that did not fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak? Okay. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, hi, Brad Anderson, City of Ranch Mirage. Uh, of course, I'm sure the council asked the same question, but I just have questions concerning, uh, why this, would it have been done earlier when the library was closed for the many months that it was? And, and I guess my main concern is, uh, the flooring itself. This is, seems like this is a, I don't know, not a seasonal thing, but it seems like it's comes up a lot and, and I would hope, I know you have some probably specialized bamboo or something before, maybe we should consider, or you should consider, uh, a more durable flooring, uh, that may, uh, hold up better and, uh, uh, take a little more use, especially knowing that the last year that there was not very many people going through that library, and we still doing a flooring thing, that's, that's kind of concerning when you have a year that, uh, wasn't even really used. So, and, uh, that's, and, uh, item twelve, uh, that's good that we, we moved that. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, seeing no one else that wishes to speak on this item, we will close the public comment period, and, uh, before I return this to the council, uh, our library was not closed, uh, like our other city facilities during the pandemic, it was open. Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Isaiah. Are there any council comments regarding this item?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Aaron, just one question, can you elaborate on how we are handling our book donations? Has it started? What is the process and, uh, what are we doing?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, as of, uh, June fifteenth, uh, we are actively accepting, uh, donations from the public, uh, and this closure would not necessarily prohibit that as well because those donations would come through the back of our staff area. So, uh, if you have your book donations and would like to donate them to the Ranch Mirage Library, uh, please do so. Uh, you can do so at the back of the staff area, parking lot, our shipping area, ring that doorbell. Our staff would be happy to answer, uh, that door and take those donations, and those donations would then have, be put into our book nook, uh, which we are hoping to open up very soon here.
Very good. Thank you, Aaron. I have one more question. I get questions about when estates, when people pass away and they have five hundred or a thousand books in their house that they want to donate, do we have the facility to sending somebody out there and bringing all those into the library, or how are they handled? Is it responsibility of the estate to do that?
Uh, depending, uh, I would first suggest that they contact me directly, and depending on if we're going to accept that, uh, donation, then if we do accept that donation, then we would happily be, uh, able to get to the estate to help pick it up.
Very good. And one more question, question of art that people want to donate, and I know we went through this with the Juhuli, do you want to kind of further let people know where we stand on accepting art in our library?
Uh, again, that comes kind of back to the question about the, uh, book donations in the state. Now, if they contact me directly, I will see if we have a, uh, place for it in our city and for in our library. Um, and then if it is a sizable contribution of a piece of art, I would bring that back to the city council for their approval.
Well, you do have all the answers, buddy. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Aaron, I have a question. Uh, can you bring us up to date as to when the, uh, library and observatory will be in full operation?
Uh, the anticipation is, uh, we're in full operation now, sir. Um, the anticipation is that upon our, uh, reopening after this particular project, we will be in full pre-COVID hours as operation.
And our programming is returning October?
October first as well.
Are there any other, uh, any other comments regarding?
Well, I don't have, I don't have any comments or questions, I just have a request because I keep hearing a number of people mention whether or not you can include on your next schedule, uh, bringing back gingerbread house making again during our Christmas celebrations.
I am happy to announce that we will be bringing back our gingerbread, uh, house making, uh, in December.
Oh, great. Okay, everyone will be happy. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, very good. Hey, as, as long as we're asking some of these questions by last month, I promise. You want to talk about the, um?
The floor? Yes.
No, it's about the floor, but you know, it'd let you know. Barbara Walters here wants to know things that people ask Barbara. So Barbara is saying, Aaron, do you want to talk about at this time the children in the library?
Absolutely, sir. Uh, what Charlie is referring to is the Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory Foundation submitted a grant to the Richard Brook Foundation, uh, in the tune of seventy-five thousand dollars to continue and expand the youth theater program. Um, and on July second, I am happy to announce that we were, uh, awarded that grant, and we look forward to, uh, bringing our youth theater back, increasing it, and, uh, just as a little pre-note, uh, starting here, in, I believe it is September, we will hold auditions for Little Mermaid Junior. So more information will be coming out, and so please subscribe to our e-blast newsletters.
Very good. And attending, uh, your last meeting the other day for the, uh, foundation, the observatory and the library, you have a, a great staff and, and great opportunities that are bringing forward to this city and improving all the time, everything that goes on in that library. Now, to answer Isaiah's point, what about the floor again?
Hey! Yeah, so obviously, it's a heavily utilized facility, uh, so for this section of the flooring, this will be the first time since, uh, that we will be replacing, uh, this part of the flooring. So, for this section of the flooring, this will be the first time since that we will be replacing this part of the flooring. And it's just due to the heavy use on the facility over the years. So, it is a much-needed project.
All right. Dana, did you want to say something?
I just said it makes sense to me.
Okay. May I entertain a motion, please?
I would move in the affirmative support. That we support the closure on the date and time schedule.
Very good. I will second that, Dana.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Christie, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Townsend?
Also known as Barbara Walters? Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Great, thank you. And Christie, you might want to stay right where you are because the next subject is the annual appointments of city council representatives to various outside agency boards, committees, and commissions. Are there any public comments regarding this, Isaiah?
So, if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now's the time to do so. You would press the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Christie, do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
Okay. Anyone here in person that didn't fill out a speaker card? No? Okay. Let's go to our remote audience. And Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hi, Brad Anderson, Ranch Mirage again. Just on the appointment process, I would hope that the city council would consider making that as transparent as possible, like many of the other valley cities do. And actually televise that, that would be awesome. Because I know at, I think you had a special meeting for the perks, and that was televised, but it never made it to the video or the YouTube videos channel. So, it just go, and that's just something, because I'm fearful that we're going to go until November 20, 22, where we won't have any, not inside appointments, but true appointments that are cast by merit and not friendships. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else that wishes to speak on this item, we will close the public comment period, and I'll turn this back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Isaiah. Christie, do you want to make a presentation on this?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, council. So, city council annually appoints representatives from its membership to serve on various outside agency boards, committees, and commissions. The staff report you received included a list of proposed outside agency appointments for consideration. No changes are proposed to the appointments, so the appointments listed are the same as the existing appointments, which were approved in June of last year. So, appointments made today will be effective upon approval, and that's all I have.
All right, I thank you. Are there any comments by the council members?
I would say we could make just one motion to adopt the outline on page 14-3, considering that it's already in effect from the prior year.
Well, that's what we do. It would be one motion to approve the entire list. And is that your motion, Dana?
Yes, that's my motion.
All right.
If anybody wants to talk about it, he can talk about anything on there.
Sure. It would be the entire representations as submitted. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And Christie, if you would, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. And the next item will be handled by our city manager, and it has to do with the, basically, the end of the emergency the emergency order that we put in place at the beginning of the pandemic. Isaiah, would you handle this, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, at the beginning of the pandemic, the city council approved a state of emergency for the city, obviously, for the pandemic. We are now at the point, although we are not out of the pandemic, we are now at the point to where staff doesn't anticipate the need to implement any of the emergency measures that the state of emergency gives us the authority to do. So, with that, if we ever needed to, if the pandemic began to come back, the city council could always consider future actions at a future date. But where we sit now, staff feels that it is appropriate to remove these special powers that we are granted under our state of emergency due to where we're at in the pandemic. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And before we go to the council, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period on this item. So, if any members of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. You would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Christie, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Okay. And anyone here in person that did not fill out a speaker card? Okay. And we will go to our remote audience. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hi, yes, Brad Anderson. I live in the city. I am for support of this resolution, and I hope you will pass it so people can come out of hiding and join the human race. And also, I guess, the state of emergency, I don't know, I think the terminology should be probably local health emergency. But anyway, and I would rather on these type of presentations or, I guess, informer or resolutions, this type, I mean, we do have a health officer or a health official, and you sub that to Riverside County. And we can have a local representative from, I would hope, Eisenhower Hospital that would probably most likely volunteer for that duty. You should, we should look into that because the city, unless they really demonstrate where this information is coming from and detail that thoroughly, I have to question a lot of it because of yoga in the park and all these incidents from earlier. And, but again, I'm for support of this. Thank you. Oh, I wanted to speak on closed session items too when that comes available. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else that wishes to speak on this item, I'll turn this back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Isaiah. Are there any council comments on this?
I have one, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Of course.
I'm wondering if anybody has a clue as to why so many people are avoiding vaccination when all of the press, at least all of the legitimate press, makes it clear that vaccination is the most assured, the most guaranteed, the most likely method of fighting the disease and defeating it. I just cannot understand how such a high percentage of Americans have affirmatively rejected the shots, the shots in the arm. And I'm wondering if anybody on our staff or council has any good guess or perhaps information, if there is that kind of information now? Because I know I'm not the only person raising that issue. What is so fearful about a vaccination shot?
So?
People don't know what the results may be if they take the shot. Well, they know what the odds are. They jump gigantically to them getting the disease and not getting the shot. I mean, the numbers are gigantic. There's not a logical argument to it.
You know, Dana, it's like this. It's like if you run the Titanic and it's sinking, and people could get in the lifeboat, they say, no, I'm not getting in that little itty-bitty lifeboat. I'm staying here on this big ship. However, if you notice the last few days, and of course, what the president has said, they have big campaigns from government saying exactly what you're saying. You're literally taking your life in your hands by not getting these shots. And also, with this new virus that's out there, there's a bigger concern coming down the road for people who do not have these shots. So, it's very good of you bringing this up.
Yes, staff still participates on the county calls. And really, from early on in the pandemic, whether it was sharing information as things were moving very quickly, but these calls became a great way to, one, get information, and also just talk to each other about approaches that are working, that aren't working. So, in the early days of the pandemic, it was, a lot was focused on testing and things of that nature. So, there is still a very big perception issue that they're facing where, you know, some people are afraid of the vaccine. Maybe they've heard misinformation about the vaccine. So, there is a rather large public education outreach that the county is doing and that we have, and all the local cities have also been supporting the message about getting vaccinated and how easy it is. But there is a little bit of fear within society. Some of that is maybe just human nature. We probably see it a little bit with flu shots and things like that. And then other of it, other components are, you know, social media and things like that, where it's very easy to spread misinformation. So, they fully recognize that they're running into some of those issues when they start to struggle with vaccination rates, much like we encountered with testing. You know, so the county has really stepped up its role in public education on the vaccine and why it's important.
Very good, Isaiah. Before we pass 15, is it improper for you to discuss of how we're opening city hall and what we are requiring, or do you want to do that after?
No, that's fine. I can take that question now. So, we are following this, one, the Cal OSHA guidelines for our employees. And then we're also following the CDC guidelines and state guidelines for mask requirements within our facility. And so, it is, one of the good things about kind of the state we're in now is early in the pandemic, the rules were very complicated and sometimes hard for people to keep up with and understand. But where we're at now is a member of the public does not need to wear a mask in our facility if they are fully vaccinated. That is on the honor system. Of course, if somebody comes into our facility and they still have access to hand sanitizer, we still have masks. So, if somebody felt more comfortable in a mask, we have them available here at the city for anybody that's in our facility.
Very good. And the last question is, when we come back, what date are we coming back in? And also, will we continue the Zooming for people who cannot attend?
So, yeah, the next scheduled meeting for the city council is planned to be September 2nd. So, every year, the council typically goes dark in August. You did not last year. We held meetings during August because there was a need. So, if something comes up and there is a need for a council meeting, we can absolutely have them in August, but we are typically dark. And so, right now, the plan is to have your next meeting at your regularly scheduled meeting in September, which is September 2nd. As far as city council meetings, again, with the new state guidelines, so for fully vaccinated individuals, which all of you are fully vaccinated, you know, some of the social distancing requirements and masking requirements have been lifted. And so, the city council will be in person in September. So, you will be sitting right here in your chairs. We fully recognize that there are some people that would still prefer to not come into a crowded council room for a meeting. So, we will continue to offer Zoom as access to the public for the meetings. So, we're still going to be operating like we are now. Really, the only difference is you will be here sitting in your chairs, and a member of the public can come in person as they can now, or they can participate on Zoom, so that Zoom access will stay.
In other words, city council members don't have an option with that next, it's a September meeting.
City council members do have that option. So, if a city council member wanted to remain remote, the governor's executive order right now goes through October. So, the reason that we're able to even have a remote meeting is the governor by executive order suspended provisions of the Brown Act. So, right now, that order goes in through October. I'm sure we'll find out in September whether that's going to get extended or not. If the governor does not extend that order, then we would fall back to the old Brown Act rules. And essentially, we would have to, if we were going to have a council member somewhere else besides council chambers, there's several steps you had to go through, which would pretty much mean you wouldn't participate remotely because you'd have to post an agenda wherever you were going to participate from. And we'd also have the ability for the public, have to provide the opportunity for the public to comment from that location. So, everyone anticipates that the governor will probably extend these provisions since the pandemic is not over. But right now, that goes through October. So, in theory, you could continue to do it until the governor probably extends that. So, it is at the discretion of each individual city council member on how they feel comfortable and how they want to protect their own health.
Any other, any other comments? All right. This requires a motion. And I'll make a motion that the city council adopt resolution number 2021, next in order, proclaiming an end to the existence of a local state of emergency adopted to mitigate the negative effects of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Christie, if you would, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. We will be recessing shortly. There is our erstwhile city attorney in his, in his blue outfit.
Yes, very blue.
This is Urs. Very blue, Mr. City Attorney. Tell us what's on your docket.
Well, I got it really early. It was still dark.
Steve?
But I said, oh, hello.
Hey, before you start, we did have a member of the public that wished to speak on the closed session. So, should we accommodate that now or after?
Sure.
Okay.
No, we should do it now.
Okay. So, if any member of the public would like to speak on the closed session calendar, now's the time to do so. You would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Christie, do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
Anyone here in person that didn't fill out a speaker card? Okay. Brad, go ahead.
Hi, again, Brad Anderson, City Ranch Mirage. I would like to speak on all three topics of the closed session. I'll keep it brief. I should be able to do it in my time allotment. But I am concerned because on a couple occasions, I had to speak before the presentation or anything was given. And I know you probably legally can do this, but it's probably, it's inconvenient and probably, well, it's not illegal. But anyway, I'm going to go on with number one, which is the vacation, winter order, vacation winter orders versus the neighbors of Ranch Mirage. Well, that, sorry, I'm reading that all wrong. Okay. It's the SDRs versus the City Ranch Mirage case that you're working on. I just hope you can conclude that quicker than you are because you're alienating a whole portion of the city, and they were And they were talking about vaccination earlier. And that's the reason that people are probably being vaccinated because the trust in government and trust in city governments have been, have been damaged. And people are unsure of how to continue. But anyway, item number two, and that's the Save Ranch Mirage versus the City of Ranch Mirage. That's the same issue. I mean, you're alienating a whole portion of the city. I mean, a portion, a big portion of the city. And homeowners and property owners and taxpayers. And just, let's conclude that. Let's just get that behind us and move on before November 22, because that's when everything will change for sure. And number, item number three is, I guess you're negotiating with the, with the union that was implemented not that long ago. And there was a reason that was implemented because of the city government. But let's not forget that the city manager, I believe, got a 4% pay increase. As a citizen of the, the city here, I would, I would hope that maybe you can continue that generous allotment of funds to the people that actually work in the city. And because I, I'm a firm believer, if you're, if you work somewhere, you should be able to live in that place and have a livable wage to do that. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Steve, go ahead and summarize our closed session calendar, please.
Okay. So at this point, the city council is going to recess to the closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91 regarding the following two cases. The vacation rental owners and neighbors of Ranch Mirage, Ranch Mirage Vacation Rentals LLC et al. versus the City of Ranch Mirage, and the Save Ranch Mirage versus City of Ranch Mirage. The council will also meet in closed session to confer with the labor negotiator, its city manager, Isaiah Hagerman, regarding the Ranch Mirage Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding. So those are the three items we'll be discussing in closed session. And good news is I've been fully vaccinated for COVID, but some people think us attorneys need to be vaccinated for rabies. Right, Dana? I'll see you in closed session.
All right. We're going to recess to closed session. I just want to wish everybody a wonderful summer. Be careful. We look forward to seeing you back in September. We will be in chambers and we'll look forward to greeting you then. So we will now recess. And Isaiah, you'll come back on at the end of the closed session.
Yeah, any, any member of the public? Any member of the public that wishes to stay on, they stay on the link they're on right now. And any reportable action is reported out at the close of closed session. All right, it's 5:04, and the city council took no reportable action in closed session. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.